Let me do this. Good evening and welcome to the Crestwood Board of Education Study Session, Monday, February 6, 2023 at 5:30. It is 5:30 PM. Mr. Secretary, can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Ammon here. Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Badun?
Here.
Madam President?
Here.
Trustee Fuaz?
Here.
Trustee Seba?
Here.
Trustee Williamson?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. All right, first topic for discussion will be board policy review.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Board. So, as the Board recalls in our previous policy review, step one was each Board member got into a small team, went through each individual policy. There were three groups. There was the black pen group, the red pen group, and the blue pen group. And the reason why we do that is that as I would go through, I would see who wanted to make notes, changes, so on and so forth. The second step to this process is now we go through each policy that needs to have discussion. So what you see is on the right-hand column of the first page that you have here, you see group, and you'll see some that say all. Those we don't need to review because everybody agreed to that. There are all the other policies that everybody agreed to are not on here either. This is to save time. That was what I sent you in an email, I believe, on Tuesday of last week. What we'll do is we'll go through each policy. The policies are in order in your second packet, and we'll discuss what is written on requested changes. You will see that some of it is add this word, change this word. Some of it is agree to eliminate, don't agree to eliminate. And we can go through that process and have that discussion. So if we begin, the first policy in front of you is one policy, 122, Board Powers. The first thing we need to look at is letter J. And if you look at letter J, so you have to turn the page to the next page, letter J, there was a request to add the word notify. And I just want to make sure, is everybody good with us adding that word, the words notify of? That was a request from the black pen group. If there's no discussion on it, if you guys are good with it, yes?
Does notify mean notify the Board?
Yes.
Okay.
All of these refer to the Board.
From the administration?
From the administration, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So good on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The next is letters K, letter K. So for letter K, the black pen group requested to keep it. The blue and red pen group said we can delete it. It was recommended by the administration to delete. And what it says is for teachers covered under the Teacher Tenure Act, decisions about the development, content, standards, procedures, adoption, implementation of policies regarding personnel decisions, when conducting a staff and a program reduction of elimination, a position, as well as decision regarding recall, hire, often such a reduction. So the reason why the administration, in work with Neola, recommended to strike it is because that's a daily function of the administration. There is a constant evaluation and review of programs, staffing, so on and so forth. This happens on a regular basis. Now, I, as superintendent, whenever we have program changes or staff is moved from one position to another, it's in your board report. So it's already in the board process and it's under change of classification. What this is, is us to report and attain permission to do so, so on and so forth. For the systematic systemic process of this, we will always inform the Board of such changes. But to constantly be seeking board approval for such changes will slow the process down. And if we have to make changes, we don't know how long that would take. Ultimately, at the end of the day, the changes that we're going to make are going to be impacted by enrollment, are going to be impacted by test scores, are going to be impacted by cost-effective analysis, which all gets reported to the Board anyhow. So there were two groups that said remain it as striked. One group said to keep.
Dr. Masalim, off-topic, would you happen to remember who is what color?
We were red.
Yeah, we were red.
And you?
Dave, Salwa and I were red.
Okay.
And Linda, you were blue, and Andrea?
So Linda was blue, Andrea was black, and Penny?
Red with us.
Was red. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you say that one more time? I'm sorry. I know it was red.
Linda, blue, Andrea, black, Penny, red.
So would that, if I may comment on?
The Board members, the?
Well, if you were with Penny, you were red.
I know who I was with. I'm worried about the other.
Oh, you want to know who was with who?
Trustee Elzayat, my software, Linda, blue.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So can I comment?
Sure.
Okay. Since you're saying that we're already being notified, so why don't we just put notify and keep them?
We could do that.
I mean?
I mean, we could do that.
So that's my recommendation because we're being notified anyway. Just keep it in there.
Would the Board be okay with just adding the word notify?
That's fine.
All right, simple solution. Excellent. Thank you. Okay. The next one is M. So in M, you have blue and red, keep, black, remove, decisions currently in the content of a teacher administrator's performance evaluation or the impact of such decision. So the only time we bring an evaluation decision to the Board is if we're looking at nonrenewal. If we're not looking at nonrenewal, we don't report the evaluations of the staff to the Board because at that point, it's still an internal administrative decision on what their evaluation is. So if that evaluation ends up being ineffective, you know, through the probationary process, so let me just explain it this way. Because tenure law says, here's what tenure law says. Tenure law states that if somebody's in probation and you give them minimally or ineffective, you would terminate them that year unless, if you give them minimally effective and you feel that there's a possibility they can be successful, because they're on probation, how many years, Dr. Lazar?
New teachers.
New teachers.
Up to five.
Before they get permanently?
Up to five.
Before they're, before they switch over to their professional.
And then anyone new to the district on probation for one year. So through that process, and that's a teacher who's already been teaching in the stable, comes to us new. So when it comes to that, we would report to you, yes, we have this employee, this employee's ratings have been such, we are moving this employee to termination because you, as a Board, would be voting on that. When an employee is granted tenure through the process, it's every year that employee gets a new contract. Point I'm, the point I'm trying to make here is that you're looking at almost 500 employees, that's a lot of evaluations that go into play. So what we bring to the Board, we don't bring every evaluation to the Board. We only bring evaluations where if there is a concern. And we also bring evaluations to you where if it's a concern and can turn into a possible termination and/or nonrenewal of contract, you would know that anyhow because, like I said, at the end, you have to vote on that.
Okay. So if I can, anybody else want to comment first?
Well, I would just say, can you just change the statement that we would get the evaluation if there is a sign of termination?
Got it.
That's not already in there?
If there's termination or if there's not termination?
No, if there is.
If there's a concern, probably.
Or we will be informed to a?
We'll get notified.
To the perform, yeah. We'll be notified for the evaluation if they are planning on terminating the employee.
I mean, yeah, because we're going to do it no matter what.
Right.
Right, but just to put it in the policy.
Yeah.
You may do it, but maybe the next superintendent.
And all of their, every single teacher's effectiveness rating is public information. So anybody would be able to see what those final ratings are. We do upload those to the state and the state does publish them. So they're accessible.
I think to Dave's point, my concern would be reading between the lines. If these are eliminated, the lines aren't there for the next superintendent and the next Board. So we have to be very cautious as to what we remove and what words we keep so that we can hang on to some of these things without being overly pressure, you know, over pressure on the administration. But at the end of the day, next administration comes in, when you decide to retire, you can't leave until then, by the way.
Yeah.
You know, how does that fit? And if the lines aren't there, people can't find what this is. Though that's the only concern I have. They start making decisions about staff without notification or any due process to protect the staff too, right?
Yes.
I'm not worried about this administration, but the next one.
So I had a question on this. What, so from the administration's perspective, what's the justification for removing it? Does this make a process, does this alleviate any type of, like, what does this do for the administration?
If we were to add a term to notify through due process, possible termination, that helps us now explain why because we do that no matter what. But leaving it as it is, it could really bog down the administration to have to defend every single evaluation of every single staff member. And that's the concern because between the evaluation process, between investigations, between different things, there's a lot of things that go into play. And we don't want it to be where every single evaluation is going to be micromanaged is really where the?
We don't do that now.
You don't. But again, as Trustee Seba mentioned, what if this Board's not here? What if it's new Board members? Same thing as what if the superintendent or this administration's not here? Same type of thing.
I think to Trustee Elzayat's point and to your point, Dr. Masalim, I think we need to add clarity to the statement if we keep it. I think we need to add whether, what is the threshold, right? I don't think every single review should come to the Board. That's 500, right? Like you said, that's, there should be a RASIC out there. If they are getting published, like Dr. Lazar said, great, we should have access to that for sure. But I think there should be, if we do keep it in there, it's too broad because in the future, under a new administration, or let's just pick on you for a second, your administration.
Yeah.
There may be a level of a concern of the Board with someone's review that's not your concern, right? That you may think, well, it's not that big a deal and it's too broad. Maybe if you add a little bit of context to say, okay, anybody at X threshold should come to the Board, I think that'll help the administration and the Board, right? Because then we'll know, okay, there's an issue here, we need to know about it. And it doesn't put you in a bind. Because right now, we may think someone is not doing so well, you may have a different opinion. But now it's opinions instead of actual numbers. Just a recommendation.
Yeah, so I agree. I'm against striking it out again, like Mr. Seba said, like Mr. Badun said, that, you know, a new administration could take over and we want, you know, we don't want to not know what is truly happening. So, yeah, I would prefer not to strike it out.
Can we reword it?
Yes, of course.
Because I think that, we don't want to remove the pillars that hold up your foundation. We also don't want to remove them so the next foundation is being built, doesn't have those pillars to stand on either. So that we have the pillars to stand on. Let me rephrase that. We, meaning the Board.
Of course.
We may not be here, the next Board, right?
So, I mean, yeah, again, I mean, would a recommendation of adding verbiage that states teachers of whom are receiving, who may not be receiving a new?
At-risk teacher?
Who may be recommended for nonrenewal.
Teachers who may be recommended for nonrenewal due to performance?
Yeah.
I think that's a little late. I think personally, I don't want to be surprised that far into the process. I would want it to come to us before that this is what's happening. I want to make you aware, just so there's no surprises.
But this line doesn't give a date either.
Yeah.
It doesn't say.
Well, just so if we reword it, at least, you know, do you want to be surprised if a teacher calls you and says, hey, you know what, this is what's happening? I want to hear it from the administration, not from the staff member.
Mr. Seba?
What is the current process? Let me ask you that because I think that's important.
So?
Right now, you put somebody on a discussion.
So the current process is such. Goals are established in September, October.
Correct.
The first observation, and everyone's on a different timeline because it's also based on, you know, the time, how many years of service, so on and so forth. Usually, the first set of observations take place, are supposed to take place between November and January. If there's a concern with that, now, I want to reiterate to the Board as a reminder, this is the first year that we're actually doing real observations. Last year, we set the foundation. We gave people time last year because they haven't been observed as they should have in the past. So taking the data from last year into this year and then moving that data forward, first set of observations should be completed between November and January.
I don't mean to cut you off.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the agreement between the administration and the union.
Yeah, that's?
Is there a performance, then a performance improvement plan?
Yes.
Then a warning, then a termination?
Yes, because you have to have the first observation first. After that first observation, if there's concerns, or if those concerns come up before the first observation, let's say the professionalism or whatever it may be, you have to put an improvement plan together.
Okay.
That improvement plan is put together with the teacher, the union representative, or anyone, and their union representative. If they're non-union, that improvement plan is put together with the supervisor, the associate superintendent, or if it's something that I have to get involved in, I get involved in. And then that improvement plan is revisited and there's, okay, did you do this? Yes. Did you do this? Yes. Did you go to this professional development? Yes. And it's continuous, it's constant. Now, what's helped us with these improvement plans is that we have math and numeracy coaches now. So now we have additional people that can go into the classrooms and help with classroom management, so on and so forth. By March, if there isn't improvement and this person is a probationary teacher, according to the contract, we have to notify them by, I don't have the contract in front of me. Do you know the exact date?
I don't have the exact date. I know Gari likes to say the names by January-ish.
Yeah, that we're looking at nonrenewal. But the contract states, I believe it's a date in April or early May that we have to notify any staff member?
It's sooner than that from what I recall.
We have to notify?
It's March.
It's a March? Okay. Well, we have to notify, I just don't have the contract in front of me, that we have to notify the staff member that we're not renewing their contract.
But what does it say right now about notifying the Board?
In the contract?
No, like, right now, what is your process of notifying?
Before we notify the employee, we're going to notify the Board. So if we're notifying the employee in March, you're going to know before in March. If they're, if we know for a fact that we're going to go, because I can't come to the Board, now, I might come to the Board in February and through a confidential memo, these are the teachers, or these are the staff members, or these are the administrators, anyone, staff, I was going to say staff because I don't want to be, we're just talking about teachers, any staff. Any staff member who is, we have a major concern with, you're going to know well in advance that we're in the process of working with that staff member.
So if I may, your, the performance improvement plan is initiated. It's revisited.
Yes.
At that particular point, you're going to know whether or not you're moving towards a written warning or getting that person off of a PIP.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Is it, would that be the right time to notify the Board if they've moved forward? We're moving forward with the idea of a written warning. I think that's a good time for us to know so that if something does come up, everybody's protected, yourself, ourselves, and the teacher, because I think everybody here has an equal say in this, right?
You would know before the employee knows.
Which is my point. If, once you've identified that performance improvement plan follow-up to be, to proceed forward to a written warning, that would be a good time for us to know so that it's not eliminated, again, and there is not a, there's no due process, right?
Mm-hmm.
Or no buffers for the employees, the staff?
Yes.
Right? So to Ms. Barry's point earlier about the employee, you know, coming out and letting us know after the fact, like, look what happened, we already knew, okay?
Correct.
So I think there's, that's a good point for us to look at, maybe when the initiation of the revisit of the PIP.
Mm-hmm.
Is a good spot for us to be notified. If you're moving forward, if they've gotten better, you should also let us know. And that's a courtesy.
Yeah.
That's not an obligation.
Yeah.
To say, hey, you know, Mr. or Mrs. so-and-so was on a PIP, this is what they had, this is what we've done, they're moving in the right direction. I want to hear the good things too. I don't want to just hear the bad things, right? Because those people should be celebrated. I don't want to?
Agreed.
Just bring the hammer down on people. That's not fair. When somebody has done well, we should all celebrate that. So, you know, that's my point. I think that's where it stops and that's where it moves forward.
Mr. Big?
I think it's a good point, but just keep the words evaluation there because you will have other investigations that we don't want to fall under this, right? We could have other investigations that has to be notified instantly to the Board.
Yeah.
And we don't want that to get called. That's all.
I think you guys are overthinking it. He started out about 10 minutes ago saying notify in the event that, you know, they're not performing, or we go down this road or anything like that. And I would say, I think that's good enough.
But I agree with you. But when, the word notify is very broad here. When is the notification coming? After the written warning and we're moving towards termination? That's where we want clarity. That's all we're saying.
When they're evaluated and they make the determination on which way they're going to go.
It doesn't say that, though. It says notify. The evaluation can be, he's evaluated, they're going to written warning.
It's ambiguous the way it's written right now. There's no?
Right, right, right.
There's no time. It doesn't specify at what point? You were going to reword it, you said to? The notification takes place. Right?
So something, from what I'm hearing, is something in terms of notify the Board of Education prior to the possibility of a termination, of a nonrenewal of contract.
Or move to written warning instead of termination.
Okay.
So everybody who gets a written warning, we want?
Before they get a written warning, we should know they're going to written warning through a confidential memo. It doesn't have to be, you bring it to the Board and go to closed session.
Well, it has to be, it has to be confidential.
Correct. I'm just saying, there's a need to go to closed session. Don't waste, you know?
Okay.
And then if we have questions, we can reach out to you and say, hey, what's going on with?
Yeah, see, that makes more sense. I thought you meant, like, bring it to the Board.
No, 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 no. He said confidential memos. I went with that. That's why I stuck to that, yeah.
Okay, so notify the Board of Education prior to the event of a written warning or possible termination of contract.
Through confidential memo. Make sure you have that in there because I don't want people to later on start saying?
But if there needs to be further discussion, I mean, you know, we're not making it?
Well, that's a given at any time, right, Adia?
That's where you can open it up in closed session, though.
We can do closed session anything.
That's where you can ask for it.
We just don't want it in ourselves.
So you get the memo, and then you want to, no, I'm saying, if you get the memo, right, then you want closed session on it?
Okay.
You can do that anytime. You can do that now.
Right. I just don't want it not to be in writing. And then if we ask for closed session, we're told, right?
That's where I think we're protected because we're saying, give us a confidential memo so we can ask for closed session so we can discuss this.
So, and again, we'll go back to what if we're not here or somebody else is here? It's got to come to you for a vote anyhow. Therefore, if somebody brings you something to vote and you were never informed, you can vote no, or you can say, we're not voting on this today.
Correct.
Where's the information? So at the end, you have the final power to vote yea or nay on a termination, okay? But you don't have the voting power on a written warning because that's an internal HR process.
Agreed. And just to the point of whether we're here or someone else is here, keep in mind, you can change any one of these anytime you want to.
Yeah.
Anytime you want, you can notify the administration and you can tell them, I want a review of whatever said policy, and we go through the same process. We talk about the policy, we decide we want to change it, we go through the first reading, we vote on it, and then, and then we vote for the change.
Again, but if you eliminate these lines, you can't read between the lines to be able to pull those things back in. Once they're eliminated, they're struck from the contract. They're struck from the verbiage.
Understood. But I'm just saying, when we're talking about, this might not be the next administration, these Board seats may not be filled with the same Board members. I mean, anytime, whether we come or go, stay, Youssef, the administration, anytime, these can be changed through the process.
Correct.
So, I mean, I'm good with what was just said about M. I don't know how everybody else feels. Yep, I'm good.
Well, so just to summarize, we want two notifications. The first one with the first warning, and the second one when it's agreed that they're going to be terminated. So should that be two separate lines? Or is that, are we just asking for just, just on the warning? Or?
From what I'm hearing here?
If we're notified the first time, we would go through the memo. If we wanted follow-up, we would ask for follow-up. If anything else happens further, I mean, like, we'll be?
So it would be the two, like you said?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We'd want, we'd want the first warning and the notification and they're going to terminate.
Trustee Seba?
May I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Right now, we're not voting on termination anyway.
No.
So that's not going to change. To your point, there isn't a second step. It's, they got a PIP, from the PIP, performance improvement plan, they're moving to written warning, we are notified at that particular point that we're going to put them on written warning. And then if we see in three months that they've been terminated, we've already been made aware that this person is somebody that we've had issues with and we've been trying to help, but we couldn't get them on track. So we're actually notified once. The second notification is of termination, which it's already done.
And you would get a memo, you would get a memo on that too?
Yeah.
I thought we would be notified before they're terminated.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
So you're getting the notification that they're being terminated so you could, if you wanted to have another closed session, you could do it.
So, yeah, but before termination?
It would be before your meeting to vote on termination. You would get noticed.
Is there a vote on termination?
Yes.
But before, I, I don't want to.
There wasn't a vote on termination before?
I was having a discussion.
Yeah.
I don't understand how to do this.
I haven't been a part of it.
Let me. Termination works as such. And employees in the process, the employee is told, you have a choice. If you choose to resign, you can resign.
Correct.
That doesn't come to the Board. The Board sees resignation. If the employee is like, no, I want to fight this, I don't agree with your decision, then it goes to termination. That's when you would see it.
That's why we haven't seen any.
Exactly. So what would end up happening is you would get a memo that we are in the process of working with this employee who we have concerns with that may lead to termination. What I want to explain to the Board, we may be working with an employee that is not doing, is not, like, doing the greatest, but we're not looking at termination because what they need help in, they're doing it, they're working towards it.
You're working towards developing them.
Yeah, they're developing. So we're not going to come back to you and tell you that. But if I have an employee, doesn't matter who the employee is, who we're working with, but they're not doing their end of the bargain, and they're not moving forward as they need to move, then that becomes this person, A, B, C, D, N, E, here's what we've done, these are our concerns, this is what this person's not doing, therefore, this could become a termination. Now, let's say the person, you know, changes. Well, then you'll get a memo saying, hey, member so-and-so? No, they've stepped up, they've done A, B, C, and D. We do this all under tenure law. This is all based off of tenure law. We do not deviate from tenure law. And my experience has always been that you follow tenure law for two reasons. Number one, because it's the right thing to do. You got to help people get better first. Sometimes, you know, I've been accused of helping people way too long. On the other end, it's because you're also protecting the school district, that you have done everything in your power to support that individual. Because at the end of the day, we bring Gari in, and we show Gari, from the beginning, we show Gari everything, and Gari will advise us, do this, don't do this. Have you done this? So that if it does become a lawsuit, Gari was part of the process from the very beginning, so she has all the information she needs, which we've had a couple situations of such, and some people have resigned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Youssef. So next one is O.
O, okay. So O is, basically what it's saying is that we give the Board every decision that we have off of observations. Again, that's internal, it's HR. When it comes to O, the black pen group wants to keep, the red pen group wants to, red and blue want to remove. It's also stated here, just to inform. So the thing is, you're not going to get that other information without this information. Does that make sense? So you're not going to get, hey, we got a concern with this teacher, without giving you the data on what our observations found.
M answers O. M answers.
M answers O. It's just redundant and it's just extra. That's why if we do that, it works itself out.
Yeah, if there's no M, there's no concern. It doesn't come to the Board.
O doesn't, O doesn't.
Okay, next one.
Okay, so we are done with 122. So we go to 131. Point one, this one only has one, so, third paragraph, keep, third paragraph, remove. So keep is the black pen group, remove is the blue and red. So for the third paragraph, it's what's crossed out. And basically what this says is that when you're reviewing, "Those bylaws policies are not dictated by the statutes or rules of the State of Board of Education ordered by the Superintendent of Public Instruction or a court competent authority amended and repealed at any meeting of the Board. Provided the proposed adoption amendment or repeal shall have been proposed at a previous Board meeting and proposed shall have remained." So basically what it says is, if there's, if there's an agenda item that is being recommended for change, like amending a policy or adding a new policy, you put it on today's Board meeting and you don't vote on it, it just stays on the agenda every Board meeting moving forward. The reason why we recommend to remove it is because if the President of the Board comes back from, you know, the rest of the Board and says, we want to put this back on, we're going to put it back on the agenda anyhow. If it just sits on the agenda for every single Board meeting, it can get confusing and redundant. That's the only reason why we recommend removing it. Because any item that's going to come for vote comes through the Board President, from the Board and the Superintendent. So no matter what, if there's going to be a policy update and it doesn't give, we don't get to it in one Board meeting, it'll come back up in the next meeting if recommended. The Board might come back and say, you know what, take that off right now. We don't want to talk about it. We'll talk about it later. So that, that's the whole point behind that.
Not only the Board President, but any member can ask.
Well, I'm saying it goes through you and then, yeah.
So don't, don't you have to, when we propose something, we have to have a resolution anyway, right? So we either reject it, vote for it, so that kind of answers that anyway, right?
Correct.
I mean, we, I don't think we've ever had anything really linger, right?
Correct. And that's the point. Because you can either say, table for next meeting, vote yea, vote nay, or you may not have a quorum.
Okay.
So it, no matter what, through Robert's Rules of Order, if something isn't completed, it's going to come back on through the recommendation of the Board and through the process. So it, no matter what, through Robert's Rules of Order, if something isn't completed, it's going to come back on through the recommendation of the board and through the process.
Yep, that makes sense.
Next one?
Good, okay. So next one's 133 judicial. This one was very simple. It was recommended, um, by the red group to add, um, at the end, parties include staff, parents, and students, just to be a little bit more clear on that process.
I'm good with that.
That good? Okay. 143 authority. So 143 for authority. We have, uh, the blue group says to remove, red and black say keep. So this one was a good conversation and, you know, after reviewing it and listening to everybody's feedback, I would agree to keep it. And the reason for that is it is correct. No member of the board can be denied any documents. The original conversation and discussion worked more on terms of overabundance of information, like constant, you know, like with 400 employees, I want 100, you know, I want these 100 employees evaluation, so on and so forth. But I would move to keep it as well because as the board, you know, you request information, we're never going to deny you it, of course. And in conversations about, okay, what board, this is future, so on and so forth, I would say keep this. So I would even strike the recommendation that is made here.
I agree.
I agree.
Good?
Yep.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think that's a good move. In fact, I took it as it was understood, but if it needs to be in there, then that's fine.
Yeah, and and again, because of the conversations, I looked at it from a different viewpoint.
Okay, are we on 143?
143, uh, we're at one.
Forty-three point one.
Point one.
143 point one.
Yep, 143 point one. Public expression of board members. So the only, so the first thing is, we recommended to remove the word necessary. And what it means is that when writing or speaking on school matters, make it clear that their views do not reflect. Or do you want it to say their views do not necessarily reflect? With social media and everything today, we have to be very careful. Because I know as a board, you are working towards speaking as one unit. And if you have individuals who want to use board dynamics for their own platform, this could cause a problem. This is where our thought process was going, where if we remove the word necessary, it's not ambiguous. That's a conversation for the board, what you think.
If I can ask a question, have you seen any problems with this where this has happened?
Again, it's it's not looking at it, I don't, you know, me personally, honestly, I don't even, I stay away from that stuff. But I'm just saying for the future. Again, because you never know who or what.
This could be a real problem with social media. So as we all know, we're seven and by ourselves individually, we're not really anything. We can't make a decision. Uh, none of that stuff. So, um, I think it should be really just black and white, clear. Does not reflect, because when we say, we can't be, um, we, I mean, this is true, we can't be reflected as the, you know, opinion of the board.
No, not the opinion of the board, but you can give your opinion and say it's not.
But but you can always, you can always put on social media, I, Nadia Berry, say blah, blah, blah. But not, I, Nadia Berry, school board trustee, say blah, blah, blah.
Well, no, no, we got to be careful how we say that. If I have, um, I know there was an issue when when somebody was, um, I think I know what you're talking about, but anyway, I don't feel that, I can say, I, Nadia Berry feel, or I, Nadia Berry support, or I, Nadia Berry endorse.
Right.
Um, I think that 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 should not be taken away from me as an elected official.
But it's not taken away from you.
No, it's not taken away from you.
Right, I just want to make sure because I know that we were.
And my apologies if I went, because I know what you're talking about. This is in reference to actions and happenings of the school district. That's what this is in reference to.
Just the school district.
Just the school district. So for example.
And and that's, yeah.
Yeah, so for example, let's say I'm a school board member, right? And I voted no on something, but everybody else voted yes. I can't go on social media and say, well, you know, I don't agree with this, but I I have the public forum here. As a board member, I have the public forum to give my opinion here. This helps not create that blurry line that somebody's going rogue, that you work together. Because we're not always going to agree. That's normal. It's a normal process. But it has to do with board, it has to do with school district issues. Now, if I'm a board member and I want to support John Smol, who's running for president, I can do that. But I can't go out there and act as if I'm speaking for the whole board on district issues.
Well, this is just what, exactly what Gari had told us a few months ago when she said, you know, we, that blurred, there can't be a blurred line between a campaign and election and the board seat itself, right? So we have to always have to make sure to separate the two or be cognizant to make sure that we're doing everything we can do to separate the two. And, um, I feel like if you're going to go on social media, if I'm going to go on social media and say Danielle Elzaya, school board trustee, feels this way, it should be, you know, then I'm speaking on behalf of the board or I'm making it sound like the board feels this way. Yeah.
I, Danielle Elzaya.
But school board trustee.
Yeah, it's not like, I haven't seen that problem, I'll be honest with you, but I'm just saying.
Means I'm using my, means I'm using my seat to say something, right? Yeah, go ahead.
There's a, there's a lot of statutes, statutes of limitations, a lot of, call it legal things that have changed with social media. Uh, one, it's very, very difficult to be reprimanded if you go on your personal social media and say me, my position, and you give your opinion about something. So one, I think that's waste of ink. Two, um, if I go on and say, I, Haseb, I'm a school board trustee and feel X, Y, and Z. Or look at the bulldozers out there, look what amazing progress it is. You, it's still, um, a catch-22 because what, if I'm saying something good, there's no problem, right? But now if I say something negative, like, oh, I don't like, uh, Dr. Masalim's haircut today, right? Let's be, let's be honest, then there's a problem. So you can't, you can't say, well, if it's positive, we can't do anything about it, and if it's negative, we have to do something about it. Absolutely not. There has to be a clear cut drive. In my opinion, uh, when it comes to, you shouldn't say, the Crestwood School Board believes in X. We should not speak on behalf of the school board. Uh, to speak on behalf of your personal opinion, I don't think we should get into that because you're not, you're not going to win this anywhere.
Okay. Salwa?
In reference to what you said, so if we're here and we don't believe in, you know, there's five to two, three to four, whatever the thing is. We vote no. That's public, open to the public, so anybody can see who voted for what.
Right.
Um, I wouldn't go out in public and say, I, Salwa Fawaz, school board member, voted no, and I don't, you know. But certainly, like he said, I could say, Salwa Fawaz, personally, I don't agree with this, right?
It's a fine line between the two.
But but you can't, that's still freedom of speech. You, I can say, I, Salwa Fawaz, but I wouldn't say, I, Salwa Fawaz, Crestwood School Board member, no.
But but you are a school board member.
But what we're, what he's saying, what Haseb's saying is even if you did, you can, as long as you're not saying the school, on behalf of the school board.
Right.
On behalf of the school board, on behalf of the district, that's a big difference.
You can, if you're a trustee too.
And I agree with you.
I think we're all saying the same thing.
I agree, I agree.
We're all saying the same thing.
So I think, Dr. Masalim, you need to fix that.
So keep it, that says necessary? That's the only question I have.
I I'm just saying, if I'm going to speak.
No, you don't have to keep the word necessarily. It's all saying the same thing. It doesn't have to say necessarily.
I mean, how is that going to change if you have necessarily or don't have it? It's still.
So, um, the thing is, is necessarily, at least it gives you an option. So let's say Danielle goes out and says, the school board would like to give condolences to the earthquake victims, blah, 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 blah. So she's speaking on behalf of the school board and she's doing it on social media. So the necessary gives you that, does give you the, and we go for it.
No, you don't want leeway.
No, but it but it but it does, it's, I mean, at least it keeps it. So if if you keep, do not word, do the word necessarily in there, then technically she can't go and say, the school board would like to give condolences to, blah, blah, blah.
But that's what we're saying, you can't do that.
So the word necessarily, David is saying, gives us some type of protection.
Right, where she actually could be speaking on social media.
I mean, if there, if you have to give a condolence on behalf of a district, I don't see that as.
I mean, if you guys want to.
No, I'm just trying to give an example.
I know, that's a good example, that's a good example, but I'm just saying that, do I want to micromanage it to that point? I mean, I just.
I mean, and then if you can go the other way, it's like, the school board would like to, you know, have a very happy Ramadan. Or I don't know what we're meaning to say, but but then again, that really wouldn't represent the full school board because, I mean, I don't practice. Not that I don't want you to have a happy Ramadan or.
Yeah, but that's also, that's also the same context of of the president or one person on the board saying, because necessarily is there or not there? You know, we the board support such item when six of the seven supported. I don't want my name associated with that, right? So, I mean, there's two ways to look at that, right?
I know, that's just, it's it's it is just.
I don't want to be associated with something I don't support because six other people do support it publicly. I get my vote, they get theirs, that's it. When we're, when we're providing statements on behalf of the entire board, that's a very cautious red line you shouldn't even get near. That's all I'm saying.
So I think we're good on necessarily.
Yep.
Okay, next one's easier. Uh, 144 point one, compensation. Currently, Kristen, is it $50 a meeting? No, currently, what board members receive? $50 a meeting?
It's fifty.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so there was discussion of moving it to $100 a meeting or keeping it $50 a meeting. That's up to the board.
Anybody?
Yeah, I want to say something. I say we go to zero. This is, I'm sorry, this is, none of us do this for the money. I'm not trying to showboat either. You guys know I've felt from day one. Anybody who says I'm not telling it like I always have is not telling the truth. I don't see a point to going up. If you want to keep it at 50, fine. But if you want to take it to 100, that's a whole different context. That's $1,400 a meeting. $1,400 twice a month, $2,800 a month. That's just uncalled for. That's my opinion. So if you guys want to bring it up, that's on you. I would never vote for that.
So I I made the original proposal to go to 100. Because of, um, maybe because of the history that I've been putting in here and the coaching and everything and now we can't be, obviously, school board members can't be paid to do coaching stuff and we're saving money there and we're spending. I know how much you spend out of your personal pocket too.
But we volunteer as head coaches though.
Correct, but we weren't. But we weren't volunteers before.
I get it, but still, now we volunteer.
Right, and and I can, you and I both know, double of what comes here gets rolled back to the kids 100%.
No doubt.
That's why I brought it up.
I I understand why it was brought up. I just, I just, again, I did not run for the seat for the 50 or $100. I just didn't and I won't.
And I don't think anybody here did.
I I get it, but I'm just saying, this, I said it from day one, this should be a voluntary position once you get elected. But I I can't, I can't see myself ever supporting $100. I'm one of seven, but.
Well, if I could say something.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, my thought is, I think that if that's the case, then an individual board member wants to donate it back, which happens through a lot of districts, and that should be their option.
I think we do. We just do it in a different way where not everybody knows, where we buy kids spikes, where we buy kids mouthpieces, where we buy kids socks. So, I mean, it is going back. Trust me, it's not going into my kids' mouths. So I I challenge the other six to do the same.
Any other thoughts?
No, this one's purely up to you.
Okay.
So what does blue, black mean? Does that mean who struck it or?
Yeah, um.
Says blue and black approved, red said no.
Red said no, got it.
So I I just need to know what the consensus is. Keep at 50, move to 100.
Are you, do we have to vote on this?
Well, it's going to be part of the whole package.
Well, we got to make a decision because next time we're going for our second read.
Well, I'd say that if it goes to 100, that it should be the individual board member that makes up their mind on how it should be spent.
I will vote no on this whole thing because of this one item. I'm just telling you guys. It's not about the money, it's about, it's about the point of some people are here for the wrong reasons it becomes, in my opinion. I'm not holding out, so you do whatever you want.
I I don't think it's a fair statement that you're making because I feel like I'm being threatened.
I didn't say anything about you.
Well, you just, I know, I'm not, I'm telling you how I feel.
I'm sorry you feel that way, but it wasn't towards you, it was towards seven people.
But I feel like you're saying, okay, because it's not my, you're my way and I know, then I'm gonna, I'm sorry, that's how, that's how it sounds to me.
Ms. Berry, our core position is to help.
100%.
Well, let me finish my, let me finish my statement, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Is to make sure that the financials of this district are in order, okay? To minimize expenditures where we can.
Right.
Right?
Right.
And to increase profitability where we can.
Okay.
So for us to go off and take another $1,400 twice a month, $2,800 a month.
Donate their $1,400 back to them.
But it's coming out of the school district. Whether I donated or not, it came out of the bottom line of the school district.
But no, but you get to choose where it goes, and I understand what he's saying. He's saying that he was, he's donating, plus he was, you know, he's coaching, so he wants to be able to decide. So he can take that extra money and put it towards his football.
But all I'm saying is, it's coming out of the till of 4,000 students. For me to decide what I'm going to do with it on the backs of 4,000 students isn't fair.
I understand, but.
And maybe I shouldn't have said I'll vote no on the whole thing, but I'm very passionate about this point. That I just don't think we should be giving ourselves raises because we feel like we deserve a raise. That's all I'm saying. You know, people in in certain legislative bodies in this country are doing that all the time and people are getting offended by it, and they should be, and I am. We don't give ourselves a raise because we feel we deserve one, because it's coming out of the books of these children, the 4,000 plus students.
Without a doubt.
So that's my point.
But if we could also say that, okay, and then you choose what what group of students you want, you know, what sports group or band or cheerleading that you want to decide to take that half and give it to. I wouldn't mind that.
So my 100 football kids are going to benefit because of 4,000 kids who lost out on that one to me. Is that what you're saying?
So I just want to say, I think, I think I know.
I understand her point, I'm not just, I'm not saying she's wrong.
No, no, what I'm saying is, I think we, I think we all understand both the points that you guys are trying to make. We just need to decide on something and move forward. And I don't know, I don't know, can we vote on any of these?
If there's a specific thing you want to, if there's a specific thing you want to pull. You can pull that specific policy and do an individual vote if you choose to, and you can bundle all the other policies together.
Okay.
I would, I would recommend we start a tally of things that we want individually voted on, and I would suggest that we put this as the first one, please.
Well, so far, we've had a consensus up to this point.
Correct, that's why I said put this as the first one.
So I mean, we can, we can pull, so we would have to pull 144 point one, the whole compensation. It can't be just that piece. It would have to be. Everything else in here, everybody agreed to, so it's literally coming down to just the 50 or 100. We can pull that and when we do the second read.
Well, I just, last call, uh, any other opinions other than, uh, trustee Seba and trustee Berry, because I think we both, we all know how both of you feel. I just, I just want to.
Have we been clear enough?
I just want to ask, are there any other board members, Haseb, I think, I think you know who we're using.
I I stated before they all stated, so I I responded to, and trust me, he 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 knows.
No, what I was saying is, I think, I think we're good on what, how you feel. Salwa, Billy, do you guys have any, uh, opinions either way?
Look, I mean, we were part of the red group, so we were the ones that actually turned it down. I I honestly did not think about it, um, the way you presented it. I just looked at it like, oh, my God, it's a $50 raise, we don't need that. I didn't think about you coaching or, you know, reinvesting the money back to the kids and the school. Uh, I understand your point. I understand what Nadia said. If they want the $100 and then whoever wants to donate, I I get it. So honestly, I don't, I'm fine either way, whatever, whatever.
Um.
What about David?
Oh, I'm sorry, David, I'm sorry.
David's here.
I apologize.
I mean, not everybody's financially set as everybody else, so I'm personally, I could use the extra money, but I'm willing to not. I mean, I'm willing to 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 keep it as it is.
There's not a millionaire amongst us, David, I promise.
Well, I know, I know, I know, I'm just saying.
I mean, we, we all got fiscal responsibilities and that's all.
Actually, I don't even think that we need to keep this for a tally. I think that we have a consensus to make it 100.
But I also live in the same zone where I do put a lot of my money back into a program.
I mean, we do.
Yeah, I think, I think we've come to a consensus that we can change it to 100.
You know, and we could put something in there that, you know, you're, you can totally.
Well, you wouldn't have to put that in, I don't think, Nadia, because I think you can do that either way. I can do it now. I I don't need, I don't need it put in the policy.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Seba.
I would request that we would keep that to the side and vote on it independently, please.
We, and we can do the two. I'll pull that and I'll have it as a.
Just the one item. I don't care if it's six, one, five, two, whatever it may be.
So would that be 144 point one?
It'd be 144 point one, yes.
Okay, so we'll keep those.
It would just be a separate action voting item. When you vote the policies through, you'd vote on that one by itself and vote on the rest of them as a group.
Okay.
But why would you do that if you have your consensus?
The same reason other people have asked for things to be pulled out when you had a consensus. The same reason other people have asked for things to be pulled out when you had a consensus, knowing they'd be the only no. Is that fair?
Yep, that's fair.
Uh, just to, um, the point here, one forty-four point one has a lot more than just that line item.
Well, it's, it, there's only that, and then.
But there's only that one that's up for.
And letter E, which are up for debate, all the rest, everybody agreed on.
Those would stay, the only one, yeah, let's make that clear from now, that is the only item in that section that will be voted on.
Well, no.
And E?
No. You have to vote for the whole policy.
Right, but I'm saying.
But that's where the, that's.
That's where the question is.
That's where the question, and then also, the second question in there is E, um, it was recommended by groups red and black to remove, blue didn't, uh, hesitant to leave, basically what E is, again, this is if you request, remember, it's if, if, so if you go to a, if you go to an event that's board-related, and you purchase a book for twenty-five dollars, you can be reimbursed for that twenty-five dollars if you ask. That's if you ask, so, um, I just, you know, just being that we're going to vote for this whole thing, just know that that was also another one that was up for conversation.
I saw that.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Where was the one, um, and I think we vaguely discussed this last time, if a board member wanted to go to professional develop, okay.
It's coming. All right, we're good with this one?
Yep.
Okay. Um, the next one, one forty-four point two, board member ethics. So, everybody was good with everything for letter N, it was requested, allow the super, it was requested to add, allow the superintendent up to three days to respond to questions. It was requ, it was recommended to put that in there, again, I didn't recommend that, okay, the only way I think I added that. And the other one was to add another board member ethics, which would be V, which is on the next page, to not maliciously attack any member of the Board of Education staff or community members. If the board with consensus is okay to add those two statements, everything else was agreed upon.
To not maliciously attack any member of the Board of Education staff or community members, trustee Barry?
Uh, for the three days, today, I messaged Danielle to ask for something. And I feel like, my, my situation is, I don't, sometimes I don't read my packet till the Sunday before, because I'm out of town most of the time. So today, I did, so would that have been a problem?
Well, if, so here's the thing, the, 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 here's where, here's where the problem lies.
Three days.
Meaning that if you had a question, he could have three, he could get up to three days to answer whatever your inquiry is about.
Okay, so it doesn't, it's not meaning that I have to give you three days to answer. Okay, so I could have liked today, like I asked the question.
No, that would take that away.
So that was in process, so that was easy.
Okay.
But if you would have requested something for tonight, that would have taken us time to research and evaluate, I would need time.
Yeah, he could say, I need more time, and we could take it to the next meeting.
But what you requested today was in process, we were going to get to last week, what we got to today, so that was, that was an easy one.
Which, to be honest with you, you could, again, you could do that now, I mean, if I requested something from you this morning, and you, uh, replied, I'm sorry, I would need a few more days to get this answer, because I need more time to research it, there's nothing that says I have to tell you I need that answer right now.
So, this board, yes, you're right. A new board could come and say, nope, it says, I get it right away. You know, and I want it tonight, or else it's going in your evaluation. I've seen that happen, I, that, not here, but I've seen that happen in other places.
No, no, what I'm saying is, I, I agree with giving you the three days.
Yeah.
There's nothing saying right now that if you don't give me something right when I ask for it, there's nothing I can do to you right now. Not you, the superintendent, whoever that may be, that's what I'm saying, so the three, I, I'm fine with the three days.
I think Salwa had to end up first, but I'll.
Oh, sorry, Salwa.
I, I don't have an issue with the three days, um, but where it, where it says to ridicule and find fault, wouldn't that be subjective?
Yes, I agree with that.
Which line are you at?
N?
Can't prove any of that, you play dumb and call it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't have, I don't have a problem with the time, but I'm just saying, that's very subjective.
Do not bring surprise questions to the board meetings to ridicule and find fault, yeah, I think I said, uh, I think we said, was that M?
That was N, that was, um.
Because I agree too, that could be subjective, that could be, that could be anything.
That could be anything.
I would just hope that.
We don't do it.
Uh, well.
Well, I, I mean, I wouldn't, I would have to have it written.
I've hoped for some other things too.
Are you asking that we remove that, or?
No, hold on, I, I know what you mean by that, I know what that means, and I, you're right, the wording is off, I think we need to reword it, I think the whole point of that is, instead of becoming accusatory in a meeting to say, well, I gave this to you and you didn't give back to me.
But it has to be clear, right.
It should be, it should be refined, to ridicule and find fault, I, you know, I think.
That's so opinionated.
Here, you know, I think that goes right back to V, right? It becomes.
Oh, yeah, it does.
It becomes a version of a malicious attack to say, you know, I'll use Linda because she's sitting directly in front, Linda, you didn't do that, and you said you were going to do that. And you look at me and go, you just got it to me last night at twelve AM, I didn't get it till seven AM this morning, I don't know how you wanted me to do that. That's where I think we need to refine this, and as for seventy-two hours, I understand what Ms. Barry's saying, that is quite a bit of time, because technically seventy-two hours becomes Wednesday. And the reason I say it becomes Wednesday is, Saturday and Sunday, you're not checking your emails, right? If I get it to you Wednesday, you have Thursday, Friday, and Monday to get back to me. So if I get it to you Thursday, you have Friday, Monday, and Tuesday to get back to me, that's seventy-two business hours.
Are you suggesting a different time?
I, I think we have to put a different time, because.
What would it be?
I think it should be twenty-four hours, and I think twenty-four hours is sufficient, even if you need to ask for more time.
Uh, how about twenty-four hour business hours?
It should be business, it can't be seventy-two hours, because Saturday and Sunday are nullified in this conversation.
Then there's holidays, too.
So, it should be twenty-four hours, even with a response of, I need an extra seventy, or I need an extra forty-eight hours, okay? Or, I'll move it off the agenda for this week, because you have questions and I can't get those back to you. You know, you talk to the president, you guys get that figured out, but to say seventy-two hours, what if I am on vacation, I come back Sunday night and I read it, twelve o'clock at night and I got questions? You, you shouldn't be able to take that away from me, because I got questions, right? So that's all I'm saying, I think twenty-four business hours is sufficient with the ability of the administration to ask for another forty-eight hours.
Well, I mean, I hate to play the what-if game, but, I'm gonna anyway, what if our superintendent is sick, doesn't see the email, is somewhere, you know, he's on vacation, it's remote work, um, he's not like remotely looking.
Just give us a.
How does that work even, and I'm not questioning the twenty-four hours, I'm saying, how does that work even with this, if we put any timeline? Even if we put seventy-two hours?
That's a great point.
Even if we put forty-eight, like, how does that work?
Do you put out of office, Dr. Musalem, if you're, if you're not in office, does your out of office give an automatic reply?
Um, only if I'm not checking my email.
So if you decide.
But you would know.
If you're sick today, does, and I send you an email, would I get an out of office?
No, but you would get an email or a message from Danielle that I'm out, so you would know about.
How about within, within forty-eight or twenty-four, whatever number you guys decide? So if it's twenty-four, within twenty-four hours of the request, provided that the superintendent is at work that day, or is.
I don't think you need to put that in there, you'll know if he's not here.
Nobody's trying to stick it to the superintendent.
So I, what, something, something was.
My intention is not to stick it to the superintendent, I don't think anybody at this table is trying to stick it to the superintendent. I think people just want their fair share of being able to ask pertinent questions about something, and wanting a response, I don't agree with meetings at five-thirty, I'm going to call you at three o'clock and say, hey, what the heck is this, I need an answer by five-thirty. I don't agree with that, and I don't agree coming in at five-thirty and saying, Linda, I sent this to you at three o'clock, why, again, picking on you, Linda, just because you're Friday. I don't agree with that, but I also don't agree with, I gotta send it to you Wednesday to have an answer on Monday.
I agree.
That's not fair.
I agree, I don't agree with the seven, I don't think it'll, I don't think it needs three days, I think forty-eight hours is good.
Again, that's Thursday.
I don't know that we have to, like, whether, whether he's in, whether the superintendent's, he or she, whoever it is.
And if you look at, and again, if you look at, like, whenever any of you request anything, it's usually within a day or two you receive the information anyhow. I think what it comes down to is, there might be certain things that I can't get to you immediately, I just need, I need more time.
But you say that, you always say that, right.
It would require, it would be just an email from you, a response.
So, could it be?
I need an additional forty-eight hours.
So would it, could it be within twenty-four hours or, or requested?
More time.
Well, how, how about this to protect you?
It just needs to say response.
If I have a question on something in here, I send it to you and Linda, and if you're out, Linda can respond with, Dr. Musalem is out, we need an additional forty-eight hours. And that could be a generic response that Linda gives, and now I know you've bought yourself seventy-two hours to give me a response.
Got you.
And then in forty-eight hours, you can respond and say, we should push this to the next agenda, because I don't have the answer.
But that's the same as the seventy-two hours, right?
It is, but it takes away my, my point of being able to ask questions on a Friday or Saturday.
So if you look at the last, if you look at M, it says bring factual concerns with information to the board president and the superintendent in a timely manner to allow the superintendent time to look into matters, it should say superintendent or designee, that way, if Yusuf isn't around, there's an acting superintendent at that time anyway.
Which is Linda.
Or designee, and it should say, no, it should say, or designee, whoever he designates.
Andrea, let's call her Andrea.
Time to look into matters and give the superintendent three days to respond. So, response is exactly what trustee Seba was saying in the beginning, the response could be, I'm responding to your email, I need a little extra time to get you this, this information, period, done. You guys are, now you're in communication with each other on whatever the issue may have been.
So, to comment if I can, um, even if there was a designee involved, that designee still has to go to the superintendent, because he's going to want to know what's going on anyway.
Well, they do that, but the whole thing is with the designee, and I understand where trustee Elzaya, President Elzaya is coming in, is the fact that, I may not be available, but Linda or Andrea or Penny's working on something.
Let's say he can talk to her on the phone, and he can't email you. He can say, Linda, please respond as my designee, and say, we need a little more time to get this information, or, here's the information, please respond with it. So it can, it doesn't, this says only the superintendent can give you your answer.
Well, like when I was out of country, and we had a snow day, she was my designee.
And she did a great job, let me tell you.
So she made the call, she worked with the team, she made the call.
She just picked on her twice in a row.
I did not, I was.
Actually, four times, but who's counting?
The only, the only change I, I, I would make is, we remove the word superintendent and we put administration, because if he's not here.
I would have.
I want to hear from the superintendent.
Or superintendent, and designee, yeah.
If I'm him, I don't want administration, because what, I start sending stuff to Linda and he's not copying.
But if he's not, no, no, I'm saying everything should go through him, but if he's not here to respond.
It's his designee. He can designate Andrea while he's gone.
So we're adding designee?
Yes, superintendent or.
And, and actually, that's really what, like CFO stuff, it goes to Penny, student services specialized stuff, it goes to Andrea.
That's why I don't want to say administration is too.
But we have, we're putting it in here, because if we're not here.
Or superintendent's office.
So, so according to Neola.
That's what I'm saying, according to Neola.
When superintendent is capitalized, i- in first, is it you or your, was it when it's capitalized or when it's lowercase?
Yeah, for, so for them, because we were the same way, when we were reviewing, we kept saying, we want to say or designee. Is that written somewhere, is that like a key in the policies? No, like he said, it's assumed that when it's, because, again, the superintendent informs the team, who's acting superintendent in his absence, thus becoming the designee. Yeah.
So let's just put designee and call it a day.
I think that needs to be stated somewhere, though. This might not be the spot, maybe. But I'm just going to say, it's going to keep, it's going to be a reoccurring, because there's multiple things that I might feel the same way. In the introduction of the policy, for purposes of these policies, the word superintendent may refer to the superintendent or his designee.
That's got to be on the first page.
That could be in the introduction, yeah.
No, there's a list of terms, we can check what the definition is in the list of terms.
Cause I'm sure if that's, I think that's what's intended, that the word superintendent, when it's capitalized, means that, like you're saying, it would be written down somewhere that this is what that is.
It would be in the terms.
In some type of key, so, okay, I think we're in agreement on that.
Okay. Move forward to one fifty-two, officers. So it was recommended that language be added, which you see in the last sentence here, exactly.
Excuse me, Dr. Salwa?
Yeah.
I, I actually have a comment on, um, item one forty-four point three.
Go ahead, David.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
On the con, conflict of interest, I know it's not in the packet, I do have it open to here.
Where are you, I'm sorry.
I, I'm not on, because it's, everybody agreed that he didn't print it out on here, so I'm on the actual, so it's one forty-four point three, item D. I could read it out to you guys if you'd like, or just summarize.
I have it ready, one forty-four.
Point three.
Point three, conflict of interest.
Yep. Uh, part D, no board member shall hold a lead position of decision-making for social, I'm, I'm sorry, for school-related activities or groups outside of the Board of Education. This includes but is not limited to president or vice president of a school organization, head coach of any athletic or competitive team, or any positions such as, but there is a provision, a board member may be appointed to serve as a volunteer coach of a student extracurricular activity if all of the following conditions are present. The board member receives no compensation for service as volunteer coach. Uh, the board member abstains from voting on issues from the board concerning the program during the period of time he or she serves volunteers, there is no other qualified applicant available to fill the position, and the appointing authority has received the results of a criminal history check, blah, blah, blah. Obviously, right now, I do have a conflict since I'm the president of the band, um, so, but you do have a provision for volunteer coaches, I would like to see if we can add a provision for presidents of, um, or vice presidents of school organizations. Um, just add that wording to it.
Are you the president of the band?
I'm the president of the band boosters, yes.
Oh, band boosters?
Yes.
That's not a paid position, is it?
No.
But that's not a district position, isn't the booster a five oh one C three? It's own five oh one C three?
Well, it just said school-related activities or groups outside of the Board of Education, so that is a school-related, I would assume it's a school-related activity.
Yeah, that, that would take them out.
Yeah.
So, and, and just for this.
Yeah.
Boosters and football boosters.
Again, Madam Chair, David, I think this is beyond us, this is, David, Mo, all of us are in retirement in Florida somewhere, next person comes in, it's beyond us, like, I understand this is about you right now, and I don't blame you.
Oh, no, no.
So I, I'm just saying, this is a long-term solution, beyond David Williamson being the president of, of the band booster. The purpose, I think, for this.
No, but what I would just say, it just, where it says volunteer coach, just add or the president, just, I mean, you're basically saying that I can't, but you guys can still be in football.
Well, here's the thing.
You could be the vice president of the band booster.
No, that, that's what it says here.
Well, let me ask you a question.
It does not say, it, it says that, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I think, well, anyway, my opinion is, it's just, it's the long term, more so than the short term. Being a volunteer football coach, being on the field, doesn't put us in the school or anywhere else, but we're outside really, or in the weight room, that's pretty much.
No, and that's, and that's the same thing to me, I don't make decisions, uh, the director asks me for things, and then, you know, we get it done. It's not like I'm saying, hey, you can't do that because you're, you know, because I'm the booster president. So, I mean, I am more than happy to, like, do the provisions of, I, I abstain for any band-related stuff or anything like that.
You can have that pulled if you want.
Well, yeah, I would rather have that too, where, but I would just, if you can have that wording of volunteer coach, can, then I would also like to see the wording of, um.
Yes, yeah, these, this includes but is not limited to president or vice president of such organizations, head coach or any athletic competitive, of, of any athletic or competitive teams, and/or any positions as such. Also, the first says, no board member shall hold a lead position of decision-making for school-related activities or groups outside of the Board of Education.
See, I agree with that.
Me too.
Just personally, I mean, that's my opinion.
But, but what, does it say vice president, too?
It says president and vice president.
It would definitely affect them.
Yes.
So, do we want to pull this for a vote, like, we're pulling the, um.
Let's not take it to that, I mean, we should be able to make a decision where he can, I mean, it's a volunteer position.
I, I don't see where the conflict.
Cause he was on it, he was on it prior to winning, on the school board, right?
Yes, I've been for like six, seven years.
Well, no, he would be, um, he could be grandfathered in, he doesn't have to step down.
Again, though, I, I, so, I completely understand what you're saying, and I completely understand how it's affecting you. I don't want you to think that I don't. I do, though, have to echo trustee Seba's sentiments in saying, this has nothing to do with David Williamson or Mo Seba, Danielle Elzaya, this is, this is, this could be anybody.
No, no, you understand that, it just, this, if this goes into effect, this would.
So, Madam Chair, Dr. Musalem, if we can grandfather him in, as you said.
Well, he, he came on to the board prior to, I'd have to double-check with, uh, the attorneys.
I don't know about that.
But I, I would have to.
I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, I would have to double-check.
I'm just repeating what you said.
I would have to double-check with the attorneys, but I'm pretty sure we can, but I don't, don't quote me on that, let me double-check.
Oh, no, but, but, but that's what this does.
I get it, I get it.
I don't, I don't know, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go for like grandfathering in, but I think if, uh.
She won't that independent vote, that's for it.
Well, I, I would prefer it to be pulled completely, but I also be okay with, whereas it's, it's volunteer coach, just add the vice president, whatever. And then I would abstain if, if you won't pull that either, you know, that, that.
So.
That's not right to have the provisions.
Just, just here's the situation. So, so here's the situation with that.
If you're gonna sit here and add provisions, then you might as well take it out, but you.
I agree.
You can't just sit here and make special circumstances, that's not right, that, that's us giving ourselves preferential treatment.
Correct.
But, in this statement too, I mean, it kind, it, but it gives, I mean, preferences to coaches. Where it says he can't coach, but then you can coach if you do this.
You cannot be, no, you cannot be a leadership coach, so you can't be a head football coach.
It says, you can as long as you're not receiving money.
No.
You could, you could volunteer.
Oh, right, right.
You can't be a head coach.
You can't be a head coach.
You could still be a part of what you do, but you can't hold the title.
Volunteer to be head coach.
No.
You cannot.
Okay.
You cannot.
Cannot be a head coach.
You cannot be in a position of, of decision-making power.
You can't.
Basically what it comes down to.
And it's, that's like a checks and balances, you know? Like you can't be head of this, and then you have people under, under you making school-related decisions. Who may be intimidated because you're a school board member.
Right.
That creates a conflict. So, if I could. So it could be people who are under you in the booster, right, you're the president. So there's people who are working under you or with you on the booster. There may be something they want that you don't want, however, they would be intimidated by you. Because you're a school board member, and that's what creates the conflict.
But I think in, in a, such a small thing.
And again, don't think of it like you.
No, no, I, I under.
You would be, you know, using, or, uh, abusing your power of the seat, that's not what I'm implying at all. I'm just saying, it could be anybody, band booster aside, uh, coaching aside, like it could be anything.
But there's just so little participation right now, let's just say, I consistently, I have had, we've had meetings where I've been the only one who shows up.
So Dave, you can remove the title officially, you don't have to carry the title.
Well, and, and, no, honestly, I'm probably gonna step down in me anyhow and become treasurer if my daughter graduates.
Oh, then this becomes a move.
No, no, not really, because, but, but what if nobody else will step up to be president or vice president?
I mean, I understand the hardship, I just, I don't think I'd be comfortable. I would like to see, I feel like this is, in my experience here. And, you know, what I've seen, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I just feel like, that's good for us if this is put into place. That's good, it's, it's a good change for the board.
There's certain organizations that don't have the support and don't have the numbers to support the leadership.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Yeah, but what do you, what do you do about the problems it causes?
Well, then deal with it at that point, and the only problem, I mean, that's only if, I mean, any decision we make is, is, is voted on anyhow, it's just, almost like this, but we're a lot.
Are you asking for this to be pulled and voted on indep- independently?
I would like to be pulled completely and voted independently.
You can't do that because you've got people that want it.
Well, no, no, and voted on, I said, I'm sorry, I would like to maybe pull it and I would like to, yeah.
So we're gonna pull this one for a tally vote?
So why can't it be reworded?
What's the number of it?
It's one forty-four or point three.
Or change the position, just, just have them change the position, and then you're fine, you're still volunteer.
He doesn't wanna give up VP or president.
Well, no, but it's, but there, but there, maybe nobody to take it over, and I'll end up doing it anyhow.
So, I, I can assure you, I understand how you feel. It, it crushes my dreams of one day being the head coach of a high school program, because if I'm sitting in the seat, I can't, and I see why. Because when you're in a position to be a leader, you're a leader of the people and the children, right? So when people come to you with certain aspects or decision-making themes. They may be hindered because of your position on the school.
Yeah, but then they go to the teacher, I mean, that's, if, if they have a problem with that, then they go to the teacher.
And they should always be, but the teacher may be hindered because you're a school board member.
But, but that doesn't, well, but then they should come to me as a school board, they, they, why would, why would a parent come to a booster president who does basically nothing but the fundraising? And making sure his needs are met, they shouldn't be coming to me in the first place.
Okay, so, I have a question.
Yes.
If you're saying you're the only one who comes to the meeting sometimes.
No, no, it, it, it happened once.
Okay.
I'm just saying, it just, but most of the time, we have like six, we have the board members who show up, you know, almost all the time. But there's six active parents, I would say, and the drama's the same exact way. I have been, I mean, there have been the board members and I've been the only one sitting in the drama.
Yeah, so I, I think we need to pull this one if we don't have.
Yeah, I, I say pull it.
Okay.
So that's one forty-four point three.
And if your daughter's chasing a band, then you can't be president of booster.
Pull it for independent vote, I mean.
Yes.
Independent vote.
Yes, yes.
Hold on, can we just look at the wording? I mean, if you don't have anybody that's, that wants to fill those shoes, and if it's a board member that wants to do it, why should we deny them?
Well, what I'm saying is, we don't have a consensus. And I don't wanna keep harping on the same thing and going around and around and around. We can pull this for an individual vote, because we don't have a consensus.
When would this policy become in effect, when we all agree?
So the next board meeting would be the second.
The next board meeting, we vote.
No, next board reading is the second reading, and then you'll vote on the final.
Oh, and then we vote the next one.
So, March, April?
It'll be the first meeting in March.
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 Yeah, I'm trying to get there.
Pretty close.
Okay.
Almost there, just give me two months.
Okay.
Okay. Next one is one fifty-two, officers. It was recommended that we add the language at the end, as you see, executive officer shall not hold an executive position of the same position for more than two years. In other words, you're president, you're there for two years, if you get reelected, but after the two years, somebody else has to become president, so on and so forth.
So I would like to say that I love the idea of term limits, I don't know how everybody else feels. But I don't think that one person should be voted in president and then just remain president. And it be assumed that they're always gonna be president. And, I know that there's no, like, rotation in place for it, but, and I know we can't write that into the policy. But I would like to see everybody who sits at the table at one time, hold some type of office. And I, I know we can't write that or, or put that in, but I'm just, I'm just giving my own opinion, that's all.
I think that's basically what it says, right, you, you have to run every year. But if you get it two years in a row, the third year, you can't do that specific spot.
But you can the fourth year.
But you can the fourth year.
Yeah.
Yes.
And by the way, that's very common amongst many nonprofit boards.
It is.
Okay.
It is, and, and I think it works.
That's why I wanted to.
I've seen the, um, model, and I've seen it work, and, and I think it's good, I think it'll be good for, um, the district in years when we're all gone.
Okay, good. Next one is one sixty-six, agenda, everyone agrees, but in.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Is this the place where we decide what month the reorganization will take place?
That's coming.
That's coming?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, that was already agreed on, everybody agreed in January.
January?
Yeah, it's not on here because everybody agreed to.
Okay, just makes so much more sense.
Yeah, you all are in agreement in January.
These are just the ones who disagree.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, uh, you, it's not here, it's in the original packet.
Okay, next, sorry.
Um, so one sixty-six, agenda. Um, everybody agreed on everything except keeping first paragraph to each board member. Um, so what had happened was. The superintendent shall prepare and submit a written agenda to the board president prior to, um, each special meeting.
But this one says all, so what does that mean when it says all?
So what it means is basically, what we do now. Um, the board president, uh, basically what we do now, Kristen sends the board agenda to everybody. That's basically what we do now, so everybody's gonna still get it, so nothing's gonna really change.
Is everyone good with that?
I have to take us back a second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I need to go back to officers for a second.
Officers?
Yes.
Which one was that?
The, the one right before, one fifty-two.
Yeah.
Because what we have is two consecutive years, right?
Yes.
Where's that?
For any office.
Uh, except for those appointed.
Correct? We, we are kind of in a predicament, and I'll tell you why. Because if somebody resigns, if the president resigns in March, and somebody's elected in March to become president. Right? So now, we're in a predicament of, even the president of the United States and the vice president.
Right.
Can't do more than two terms or ten years, right? So I say we do it two years and a half, or two and a half years.
Or just call it interim period.
We, 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 we could put, it's two consecutive years with January being the start of the year. And what that means is, so let's say in March.
Forget that, that's not even the point, if somebody resigns in the middle of their term. Right? Forget this administra-, I'm not talking about this board, I'm not talking about Danielle, I'm not talking about.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I know.
I'm talking about future, if somebody resigns in the middle of their, you know, term. If, if they resign in April, then that president can't be president more than that year and the following one. Does that make sense? And I'm okay with that, if everybody's okay with it, I just wanna make sure everybody knows that.
Well, I'm sorry.
If the president resigns in April.
Okay.
And the vice president or somebody else is elected president, then that president finishes out that term.
That's considered one year?
Correct, and then the following year is considered the second year.
So it should say two years in addition, we need wording, I know what you're saying.
Correct, we need wording, either we're good with this, or we need to word it to say.
You need to word it to say that they.
You could say two years.
Two consecutive years start January. To his point, two consecutive years start January.
Or not counting interim period.
It could say, if the officer is appointed midterm, that does not count.
Well, by, by saying two consecutive years start January.
I don't care either way, I'm just saying, we need to address that.
I'm saying for purposes of wording.
Because it's gonna come up.
But, but when we put two consecutive years, starting with January, if you come in in April, April to January is not gonna count. Starting in January, that's when your two years count.
That's what we're saying, we just need wording in there to say this.
That's not what he's saying, he's saying, he.
No, it is what I'm saying.
So you're saying, so that would be three years then?
Well, no, it would be two years and seven months.
And whatever you're, you're.
That's why I.
So if you're appointed mid-year, that mid-year to the next year should not count as one.
Now, to her point, I'm good with also adding.
It should count as one.
Two years and seven months, maximum. Okay, and the reason I say that is, because if you take over in February, we elect the president in January and they resign in February for whatever reason. You've now got three years.
Then the problem you're gonna run into, though, is then you're gonna have, then you're gonna have an organizational meeting outside of January.
And that's what we're trying to avoid because of elections.
I'm with you, I'm just telling you, if there's a resignation, you're gonna have to have it anyway.
Exactly.
I think if you're taking over midterm, it shouldn't count against you.
It should just read the language of two years with the exception of interim or appointed timeframe.
Exactly.
For that period not to count?
Yeah.
For that period not to count, right.
For that period not to count towards your two years.
It still has to be voted in every year, so if, if the board is seeing an abuse of power, then they don't vote them in for the.
That's not the way it works, Dave, trust me, it's not the way it works, it's not the way it's worked around here.
Okay.
But, I mean, in theory, though.
So here, I, you know what, I think, I think I have a solution. The solution would be.
I didn't, I didn't say, oh, here we go, my God, I can't say any more.
I think I have a solution, I think, and what we can add in the wording is, if somebody fills a vacant position, they fill that position as an interim until the January.
Right, that's what it says.
So word it.
Two years with the exception of interim and appointed.
All appointed interim months do not count towards this two years.
Correct.
Yeah, so we'll have an interim, and then we'll have an election. So then we don't leave, we don't remove the January vote.
Are we gonna need a, um, we're gonna need, let's finish these because we do have a request for a closed session, so I don't know if we're gonna have to.
Well, and we, we haven't, and we, and we have, do have something we need to present.
Okay.
So, um, the agenda, I am going to, there's, actually, so there's nothing, everybody gets everything, just so everybody knows, nothing's gonna change there. Um, one sixty-seven point five. Um, black and blue agree to remove, red would like to keep, which is A, messages between the board members. Or between board members and employees which do not involve deliberating or rendering a decision pending before the board. What this means is that. Board members and employees shouldn't be emailing each other about a decision that's coming to the board. So basically, it's coming to the board, let's go back to the whole evaluation thing. A board member shouldn't be talking with an employee via their use of their email information concerning that. So anything that's gonna be deliberated by the board shouldn't be in conversation.
Well, isn't that in place now?
That's, yeah.
It is. It is, but it was an option, so that's why we just left it off.
Okay, yeah.
But only if something's gonna be deliberated.
Correct, this deliberating is, is that.
Like renting the gym, I can text.
Exactly, that's why that's taken out.
Okay.
Cause it's deliberating.
What number are you on, Yusuf?
One sixty-seven five.
Oh.
It was the only thing there.
Which letter?
So we're, so we're keeping that, right?
No, it's being removed, it's not checked.
Sixty-seven.
But then, um, but then you're allowing the, the conversation to take place.
Which do not involve deliberating.
Electronic mail only.
Yeah, so we wanna keep it, my apologies, we wanna keep it, we wanna keep it.
This is through electronic mail only, you can't dictate what people can discuss.
Correct, so we wanna keep it, is the point.
That's fine.
Yes.
Well, e- email, text.
All electronic mail.
Yeah, yeah.
Wait a second, I haven't, sorry to go back, but on one sixty-seven point three, Jay, he said, keep and add three minutes and one minute increment in addition, questions should be submitted. Nowhere does it say who should, who, who decides that they should be given the extra minute.
It's the board president.
President, always.
It's Robert's rules.
Mr. Robert's.
Yeah. Alright, so that's one sixty-seven point five, and then we also added on F, or school staff, and redirected the superintendent and board president. So responses to questions posed by members of the public administrators or school staff, and redirected superintendent and board president. So basically what it says, is basically the, the board president and the superintendent should be aware of any concerns or any questions that come to board members, so we can answer them. And that's what that says.
Okay.
Which you all do anyhow, so it's great. Uh, one seventy-one, one, everything's agreed on. C would like, uh, red would like to add to C the word majority. Calls an action to be prosecuted in the name of the district and treasurer's bond in case of breach of condition of the bond with a majority vote. That just protects the president and the board, so that it's a majority vote and the president's just not making that decision on their own.
That's where we removed the two-thirds verbiage, right?
No, that's, that's already been removed, that's all majority.
That was where it was at, I'm saying.
No, it's a different one.
Yeah, I think everyone agreed on that other one. Yeah, I think everyone agreed on that other one.
Oh, yeah, two-thirds is.
Yeah, that's, that's been.
Five people.
That's been updated to majority across the board.
171, which one now?
171.4, for treasurer. All we did was request for letter B, instead of keep proper books of account, access to proper books of account. Because that's what the CFO does, and the CFO shares that with you. Also, 175.1, so 175.1, paragraph two. So this is the one where it talks about conferences. Uh, paragraph two, red would like to remove national. Blue would like to keep rational, national, this is in paragraph two. Attendance at local county, state, national workshops and conferences is encouraged. So it comes down to, do we keep national or do we remove national?
I don't mind national if it's gonna benefit somebody. I don't. I just feel like if somebody is seeking an opportunity to go to a conference and grow, I don't know. I just, whether it's national.
I mean, I'm at the will of the board, whatever you like.
If it's an international, I would have a bigger problem.
The, the only thing I think, oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't say anything. Go ahead. She saw the disgust on my face, that's all.
I, I think if we do attend conferences, whether it's local, national, whatever you call it, I think we need to share those findings and make sure we have, uh, ten minutes allocated to the board. And whoever the board person who attended should present their findings to the board, so we can all get better, right? Um, if you're gonna go and represent, you need to come back with the knowledge to explain to us what was, what was discussed, what was said, so we could all learn from the findings.
So essentially, I can go off the agenda and repeat what they had on the agenda and tell you this is what we learned.
You could. That's true.
However you, I mean.
But why can't, so I never got to finish my initial thought. Um, so I don't have a problem with people going to a national conference if they're going to grow, if they're, you know, like, I don't see how we say no to that, or how we put a limit to that. The only limit I see is if you're going to a national conference, is, is there some kind of limit on how much the district pays? And how much the person has to pay for that too? Like, I don't, can, is that something that could be done?
Person doesn't pay.
So the district typically pays.
No, what I'm saying is, right, we're, we're going through these policies. We can change, add in, delete. That, that's what this is for. Saying, do we add something in there for a large amount? Like, if I'm going to a conference that's gonna cost $5,000, for example, I would expect that, okay, the district is gonna pay that whole $5,000? Like, that's a burden I'm putting on the district. So could it be where I have to pay 2,500 and the district pays 2,500? I'm saying that brings it equal to going to a local conference, right? Like a state conference, or a county conference, or, or whatever. And I'm just bringing that up for discussion.
She was ahead of me, but go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Nadia.
No, I was just, um, thinking that for, for conferences, I know that there's a budget. Do we know what the budget was? And I know that it was changed recently, I, I, from what I understand.
So the budget, I believe, has always been.
Did the board approve that change?
No, it's always been $4,000. We've never touched that.
No.
It's, I just, what I can say is, this is the first time that they, we've actually used the budget.
I'm telling you, it was not $4,000. In fact, I probably have my stuff all saved. It was, uh, a different number. But personally, I feel that if this is an option to grow, then why would we stop anybody from wanting to grow?
Not stop them. I'm saying, limit the amount of money you can spend on a conference. Trustee Sabah.
I'm all for growth. I, I'm not against anybody wanting to grow, and I'm not against anybody wanting to learn. I just think you should pay for it.
It's, it's always been part of being.
I know what it's always been. I'm, I'm, I waited for you, Ms. Berry. I'd love to finish, if that's okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I just think if you want to grow, you know, and this is something you wanna do, this is not corporate America where I'm going to expand my knowledge as a manager. I'm going to expand my knowledge as a board member, so that I can come back and let the administration do their job and support the administration. If anybody benefits from these, it's them, not us.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't envision where I'm gonna go to a conference and pick up something where I go eureka, I'm gonna change the entire trajectory of the entire district because I learned this one thing, and it costs $5,000 for me to go Orlando for a week. I'm just saying.
I do, I agree. I do think though, we should pay something towards it. So I feel like, you know, uh, it, it could say, you can attend any conference you want, but your max spending amount is, you know, a thousand dollars.
Well, that's what, we put in there for the vote. You put in there for the vote. That's all we did. We, we put in there for the vote for the whole board. So you can, there's in there, the comment was put in there that the whole vote, the board needs to vote on this.
To spend that money.
So if you're gonna go off and spend $5,000 in Orlando for a week, and I don't get a say in it, then what makes me think you're not gonna do it every year, you know? I'm just, I'm not saying anybody's doing it maliciously. I just think $5,000 is $5,000 that were taken out of the kid, the kid's mouth, that's all.
So is your suggestion that if somebody wants to attend a conference, it comes in front of the board for a vote?
National conference.
For that expenditure?
Absolutely.
Can we put all conferences?
We can if you guys want. I don't care. You know me, I don't wanna spend money where we don't need to.
There's a difference between a national one or a local one.
Does another district do that?
I don't know.
So I know we talked about this before when we were actually going through these, but a- as I thought about it more, um, I, I think they should be able to go. Now, and I know Nadia's been here at the board longer than I have, but they have never, and not that there's ever been a problem, because I don't think anybody's ever really been national. But, um, they've never said no. I don't even know what the budget is, honestly, but it's never been where you couldn't go to, um, a conference. And true enough, the last couple of years, everything's been, um, remote anyway, so we even saved, um, that way. But the, the thing, I guess, I, I would say is, if I, or she, or he, or any of them, want to go there and learn and benefit, that's only a plus for us and our district, because, not that they're gonna have some huge revelation, but they're gonna come back better and educated. So we want them to get educated. We want them to learn and come back and use this towards the district. May- maybe it's one of us, you know, go and come back and train the, all of us, however it is, but I don't think that should be, I don't think that should be denied.
I think you use the money you wanna give yourself as a raise to pay for it.
Um, Dr. Masalim, I have.
Not you, but I'm talking in general.
If somebody in the district right now, you or administration, wanna go to a national conference.
The school pays for it?
Uh, uh, oh, sorry. Can they go? I, I just have a few, a series of questions. Can they go?
They can go as long as it.
Is there a limit on the money?
Yes, there is a limit.
How much?
Um, it's what the per diem rate is.
Whatever the per diem rate is?
Whatever the per diem rate is.
So there's no cap, though?
There, the cap is only what we have budgeted. So in each of our categoricals, we have conferences budgeted.
Yeah, but in reality, you can come back to the board for a budget adjustment.
No, 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 that's not my, no, we budget, saying, okay, we're setting aside X many thousands of dollars for professional development.
Okay.
Part of that professional development includes, and it has to be written in our plan prior to the following year, in order for the feds to approve it, because we use federal funds.
Can it be a national conference? Is there a deline, is there a delineation, or is there a difference between national, local, state?
It can be a national conference if you've exhausted the local conferences. So for example.
Does it state that?
Yeah, for the federal guidelines, yes. So if you're sending people to.
Our guidelines?
For your guidelines, no.
No, the district itself.
For the district, for the employee, it comes off of the federal guidelines through categoricals, that if you're, if you attended the local, and you have a team that wants to go to the national, you can do that.
So if you attended M A S B.
Then you can go to N A S B.
Then you can go to N A S B?
Yes.
We, we have a membership with all these.
No, no, I know.
Organizations, which is what I'm confused about.
Trustee Sabah.
So you just said something. I'm curious. You said this is federal funds?
So we use federal funds for these professional development.
So it's not a part of general funds?
It can be, but we, we usually use federal funding.
So the federal funds that you use for the administration are separate?
Correct.
If we went, what funds would we use?
It would be general fund.
Okay, so the difference is, you're using federal funds that are allocated for this, if you choose to do it, and if they're not used, they go to general funds.
Correct.
If we go, we use general funds from the money that goes to these kids, so we can go.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, wait, how do you distinguish that for employees too?
We're not.
You're technically not employees.
But you, your check says Crestwood.
We're still not employees.
But according to legal opinion, we're technically not employees.
But could you use federal funds for the board?
Yeah, I mean, legally, we're Crestwood employees too.
You cannot.
But federal funds have to tie directly into instruction.
Federal funding ties directly into instruction and school improvement planning. That's why I had mentioned before, we have to submit it in the spring.
So let me ask a question. Do teachers get to go to conferences paid for or no?
Teachers can go to conferences only if it is developed in the school improvement plan prior to the start of the year, or if it's something local that comes up last minute, that's part of the school improvement plan. So when I say local, I'm talking about Wayne County Resa, I'm talking about Lansing, I'm talking about maybe another school district. But something that's national, that is an overnight stay, that there's gonna be airfare, that has to be pre-approved prior, or we gotta get permission from our federal auditor that, look, this just came about, it fits right into our school improvement plan. We got a team of teachers we need to send, can we send? And then they give us a green light.
Okay. And then back to with the board going to conferences, what if we just do it where, um, the funds just pay for the admission and everything else is on the board member? Hotel, stay, and whatever.
I'm saying, I mean, we'd have, we'd have to write that in if we agree to that. That's what I'm saying. I mean, can it be looked at?
Can we look at other board policies across the state? Because I've never heard of that. Just a, just an FYI, I'm not going to Orlando, just to put everybody at ease. But anyway, um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hospital, yes.
So, let, let's break this down into perspective. Is there an admin, is there an administration fee when you go to conferences? Like, if the board goes, is there one?
There's, there's the registration fee.
Okay.
And then there's mileage reimbursement if you drive.
No, no, I'm not talking about lodging. I'm talking about when you go and you register, there is an admin.
There's a registration fee?
There's a registration fee, yeah.
Okay. And that's usually the only thing you have to pay for, just regarding that conference. And then you have travel.
Yeah, that's it.
So that's what we're talking about, right?
Well, no, right now, the process is, you would get reimbursed for everything.
No, no, I get that.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, if we go represent the board and for personal growth, or whatever growth you call it, there has to be a fee paid, right, registration?
Correct.
So I'm all for the district paying the registration fee. Um, if, if we look at something where we all agree to send someone, or, you know, rotate, I don't know how it works, but if, again, if it's within reason, right? If it's in Spain, it's gonna cost the district 20 grand, I'm not okay with it. I know Danielle wants to go to Spain, but, um, I'm not okay with it.
Don't worry, our auditors aren't okay with that either.
But if she gets to Spain, I think the district should pay the registration fee, like what Billy was saying, for sure, right?
I mean, the registration fee, then everything else on.
Well, I don't know if we get that far about travel and stuff. I just think, because you have stuff in Flint, right? We go, people go, you've been to Flint or Lansing?
Lansing.
Have you been to one of them too, right?
Um, just here locally, but at the conference, it was downtown, but the one I did go to, everyone did come from all over, uh, the districts. And all of their boards, uh, paid for their lodging, their meals, everything. You guys, it's actually, I mean, it's normal for the district to pay for the board member to go to a conference.
Okay.
I only went that once, um, but.
But I think the discussion here is national, right?
So is there a.
You were okay with local, right?
Do we have a general consensus on the word national? Let's get back to the initial question. Do we have a general consensus on the word national? Do we wanna take out national or put it in? David?
Oh, and the thing about national, that's Ohio, which is only an hour away, so you, you kinda get, you know, sticky if you, it's like, I mean, if, if you're gonna do that, I mean, if you wanna limit it, then at least limit it to a, you know, eight-hour drive, or, or, or something like that, because.
See, I think we're getting, I think at that point.
That's what I'm saying. It's, it's either yes or no.
At that point, we're splitting hairs. So general consensus.
Maybe just put it on the side to vote, because I think, um, I think we're kinda split on this.
Everybody agree with that?
My comment, well, if I may, um, we need to look, there, no other district limits their board members from further educating themselves on anything, or participating, and getting involved in any type of conferences. So to me, this is shocking that we, that we would even, um, attempt to stop anybody.
No.
I mean, I would love to see people wanting to go to these things, so they can come back with the knowledge. I would love that, and I think that's, that's a, something that we lack.
Yeah, and I think here, we're pulling it, again, just because we don't have a consensus to move forward, that's all.
Just one more comment. I mean, if you go into a cost-sharing thing, then you can dissuade people from going to a conference where that wouldn't be possible.
Right. Some people might not be able to afford that.
Right.
So what I wanna limit them.
Which one is this, so we can?
So 175.1, we'll pull it. The concern, the, there will be two items for vo, well, the item for vote will be with national. So that's what it's gonna come down to, because that's the only concern.
But we have a membership with national, right?
Yeah, we get publication.
We do have a membership. We have N A S B, right?
N A S B, M A S B.
Yes.
So why would we even, that's just my question. If we're, if we're members, why would we limit to not allowing, uh, school board trustees going?
Because your membership still gets you to ac- access, so my answer to that would be, your membership still gets you access to that national knowledge, right? They have online trainings, they have courses, they have information bulletins that they put out. That's all like on a national le- level, that your membership gets you. I mean.
It also puts a discipline on.
Okay, I think we, are we gonna, uh.
Madam Chair, if we're pulling this, are we pulling it to vote with the word that the board needs to approve as a whole? So if, I mean, let's just keep in mind the language that was changed, okay, before you pull it.
So I think that we need to stick to what the, what our original question was. Do we pull the word national, or do we leave it in there?
So if we pulled this policy.
Well, that's my, that's my question. I'm sorry. My question is, if you're willing, pulling the word national, are you pulling it from the entire context, or just the fact that national needs to have full board approval?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I, I don't know. That's a good question.
Well, that's why I need, we need an answer before we pull it.
Well, if, if, if you go full context, it means you're, you're voting yea or nay to even have national in there. If you're voting on the green which was added, that says there has to be board approval, you can leave national in, because the board has to vote on it on a majority.
So this should be split into two.
Unless you wanna take.
It's one policy, though.
Unless you wanna take a consensus right now.
We wanna vote on two points.
So we can create.
You know what I'm saying, Yusuf?
We can create two, one with, one without.
We need to, I think.
Okay, that's not a problem.
I agree. I, I think we should. If we're, if we're voting on it, and it's something that we're discussing adding, we should have two. We, two will be presented, two will be voted on.
Got it.
So.
Trustee, they do.
I think one way to alleviate everything is to, every fiscal year, in January or whatever, when you go through the budget, Dr. Masalim, the board could agree to allocate X, whatever you, X, because right now, if we leave it to, okay, maybe we're going national, maybe not, and then we vote on it, you gotta find the money that you don't have allocated in your budget to do that, which sends a ripple effect downstream.
Well, we vote on the annual budget anyway.
So, so in the annual budget, why don't we allocate, like you said, there's, I don't know, four or five, I don't know what the right number is, so nobody hang me to it. If you're at, I don't know, let's say it's $7,000, and you have it allocated for board, whatever, right? If the money's in there, I don't know why we need certain approvals, and if it's not in there, then we don't have budget. I mean, that's the way, way we do it at work, too.
So both are gonna be presented, one is gonna be presented with board approval, the other's gonna be presented the other way we discussed, and then we'll vote on them. If it's with board approval, I mean, we vote on the annual budget anyway, if.
Right.
At any time, we want to up that budget, decrease that budget, that's something we vote on together. The bu, the budget is presented and we, and we vote on it.
So basically, there's always a budget that's set aside for.
Correct.
Uh, for the board, including conferences, legal fees, all that stuff. So to me, for me to hear, that number is.
Shocked. What number?
The $4,000.
Oh, that's getting to what's in there now.
So is the vote for us to vote if the person goes?
You're gonna be presented with two options.
Okay.
Both of those. You're gonna be presented with the word national, with it out, you're gonna be prevented, you're gonna be presented with, with the board approval, without.
Okay.
So you're gonna get both. We're splitting the item, so that.
This one's.
They both get pulled and they both get voted on. Okay, I believe that we have a request for a closed session.
But we have another item we need to discuss, because it's gotta come to vote.
Okay.
The next meeting. As I have Andrea Wood here, so we can go through that, have that discussion, if that's okay?
Okay.
Just because by state law, we have to get it to vote.
Alright, let's do it.
So as the board is aware, I've sent, uh, the memo a few times for the board to review. We've had the conversation here at the board meeting. Um, I haven't received anything back from the memorandums that I sent, but we had the conversation through the memorandums, the conversation of opening our school district for the virtual program, which is our 712 online program, as well as opening our district for kindergarten and young fives. The idea behind it is, as a district our size, the thing that impacts us is birth rates. And something to keep in mind, the reason why we're making this recommendation is because first and foremost, Crestwood District, uh, students would have first priority. The process for this priority is that when we, in August, when we have our classes full and we have everything situated, we can then establish how many vacant spots we have. We may have no vacant spots. We may have five vacant spots. We may have 20 vacant spots. But the idea behind it is that if we have five vacant spots, there will be a process, people would have to, uh, submit an application, so on so forth. And then there would be a lottery on students that are chosen. The stipulations for this, again, Crestwood District families would have first priority. The second stipulation would be, if you go to the online virtual program, you will not go to the brick and mortar. You're in the online virtual program through graduation, unless you move into the Crestwood School District. And if you are a young fives or kindergarten student, you can stay with us until you graduate. Your younger siblings would get priority if a spot is open, only if a spot is open. But if you have older siblings, they will not be accepted into the program, unless they're applying for the online and there's space. The idea here is to fill the gaps. We have to start looking future bond. We're not taking away from what we have for our current residents, but we wanna look for, for the future in terms of, if birth rates decline, we can fill classrooms. If birth rates don't decline, and heck, we have, you know, we have no more room, then we have no more room. But the idea behind it is to keep our option open on two different ends of the spectrum. Young fives, kindergarten, and plus, the research shows, families that do school of choice at young fives or kindergarten, and they know they have the option to stay with you through senior year, those are invested families. The online program, our online program is an excellent opportunity for students who are looking for a rigorous program, but also would prefer to be online instead of face-to-face. I have Andrea Wood here, because she can answer any of the legalities, because that's what her role is. I wanted to open up that to the board, because it would have to be voted on in the next board meeting, due to the timeline the state gives us.
Trustee for what?
So would, would the only exception of them going to brick and mortar, as you said, um, if they move into the district, that would be the only exception?
Only exception. They have to move into the district and be a resident of the Crestwood School District.
Otherwise, they're virtual till graduation.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if I may ask.
Trustee Barry.
How does that affect their sports? Um, would they be able to play sports, or how does that work?
They would, they would be eligible. We could, the district can set those parameters, but we, they would be eligible to participate in, in sports in next year.
Okay, then, my, my other question is, I, I feel like we're defeating the purpose here. We're adding these buildings so we can limit our class size. Why would we wanna even think of opening up the district for school of choice, when we're trying to limit our class sizes and keep them at a cap, and that was the purpose of us investing into these classrooms?
So, a lot, if I may answer, we're still keeping that cap. Nothing changes.
What is the cap?
The cap, our goal for kindergarten, K2 is 24, that's our goal, and young fives is 18, 18 for young fives. That's a cap. If our classrooms are full, we don't add any students. If we have space, then we add students. The, the students, and again, when we say open district, we're only talking about young fives and kinder, and the 7 through 12 online program. And it is only going to be open if there's space available. If there's not space available, then it's not open.
Right, but once we get them in, and, um, they have to go with us year to year, if we get an influx at a certain grade, but we've already registered these kids, so then, then what happens? We're stuck? We can't say to them, you're out of district?
No, it's not that, it's not that we're stuck. We haven't.
Because we know at the high school, we're, and at the middle school.
We, we have an, we have an investment, and that's what it is. We're investing in these students. And it's not something where I, there. And it's not something where I, there, that, you know, there could be different things that could happen throughout the years. But at the same time, if we have an opportunity to run, I'm just throwing a number out there, so please don't quote me on this. Instead of running ten kindergarten classrooms, we can run twelve, because we have twelve kindergarten teachers.
But we have the space.
We will have the space.
Trustee Baydun.
This is all based on the space and the cap that we already have in place.
So, I think, uh, I think, Ms. Berry, this works in the favor that you just said, right? About, um, space and limiting cla, classrooms? This is virtual only for non-district residents.
Let me talk about the, and, brick and mortar students.
Well, the brick and mortar is what, the situation we have today. If you're gonna pull some out to take advantage of this, it makes more space, right? I think the most important thing we gotta look at is, one, I think this funds itself. If you get non-residents who are in this program, this program's gonna pay for the facilitators and the teachers by itself. So it brings up student count, right? That's one. Two, it does loosen up the, call it, the little pinch we have in regards to class size today, right? The, I don't even see, I, I'm trying to think pros and cons. I don't even see a con to it, because if you are gonna hire people and add to it, once it ramps up, and hopefully it gets huge, right? You can go to five thousand students tomorrow, if you think about it, and it's gonna fund itself, and it's gonna produce more revenue for the...
Where are you gonna put them?
Trustee...
It's, it's online.
It's virtual.
But again, it's capped.
That's not what I'm talking about.
But it's capped, anyway.
Talking about the brick and mortar, if we're bringing...
The kindergarten.
The kindergarten and, uh...
I'm, I'm talking about the seven through twelve, I'm sorry.
Let's allow, uh, Ms. Wood to answer.
So the nice thing about school of choice is the flexibility. So the district is in control of how we open it, how we set it, and that gets renewed annually. You can actually even in, uh, renew it on a semester basis. So, to address your concern, we would still be in the driver's seat year after year, in terms of, like, how...
Talking about virtual, right?
Well, I'm talking specifically kindergarten.
Trustee.
Well, for all of it, we're in the driver's seat. But we get to dictate how many, like, how large of the program we want it to be, how many size spaces there are. So say we open it next year, we get three kindergartners, it doesn't impact or change the class sizes at all, but the next year it does. We can evaluate that each year as we continue the, or, or decide to discontinue it.
So if you, if you were to enroll those three children, and then the following year, you don't have the space for those three children, do you have the right to say, you know what, I'm sorry, but we don't have the room for you this year?
Not unless they break enrollment. They would still be our students.
See, that's, that's where my concern is, and I personally, if I wanna go to the community and ask for funds and for a bond, and I'm telling them I'm bringing outside students, me as a parent, being in this district, I'm gonna...
But those outside students also bring additional activity with them.
But the people that live in the district are paying for these bond costs.
Trustee Fawaz, did you have something?
Um, when it's presented, uh, to vote, can you also provide, um, what they would be eligible to participate in? What they would be excluded from, um, and then...
It's all in the memo.
Okay, and then if they are our...
Are we voting today on that?
No.
If they are our students, they can always change their mind from virtual to, um, brick and mortar.
So at this point, I'm sorry. So at this point, I'm gonna add, so we're not present, we're not voting at this meeting?
No, so it's been in the memo for the last few weeks. We discussed it at a previous meeting. Today was to have that discussion. If we're gonna, if the board comes back to me and says, we'd like to put it on the agenda for vote, it has to be voted on the next board meeting. If the board comes back to me and says, we're not even gonna, we're not even going to entertain it, then it won't be on the agenda. This is just something we're putting on the table for the board.
Do we have a consensus if we want it? Trustee Sabah.
You know, there's a lot of homeschooling kids, especially in metro Detroit, and I know young fives and kindergartners are hard to, to do virtual. But there are first, second, third graders and on that parents are doing homeschooling with. I don't homeschool my children, so I couldn't tell you what the process is. Is that something also that we could look at? Ms. Wood, maybe you could address that, because that would address the brick and mortar issue. There is no cost to keeping them virtual, and I know this is, some parents are okay with it. I'm not saying this is the way it should be, I'm just giving an option.
So I can give you a quick answer to that? Number one, it's, it's not the best scenario for the kids. Number two, it's not cost-effective. We will actually lose money if we do that, 'cause we won't have enough students.
Just trying to put it out there.
Yeah, I just wanted, 'cause we did look into that.